I want to call this meeting to order. I don't even know what time it is, but it's 7:05. All right, so we have approval of the minutes, but I need to make a correction. On the regular meeting was actually March 2nd, not March 1st. It's like, here, wait a minute. It's actually the special meeting of March 2nd. There's two changes that need to be made on that. If I can make that change. Right, and then. We have the special meeting of February 25th, the special meeting of March 2nd, special meeting of March 5th, and special meeting of March 22nd.
We must have had a regular meeting in March.
No, it was, it was scheduled for March 1st, and then we, I had to change it, and that's why it was special.
Okay, okay.
That's why it got messed up here. So, anyway, um, I, we could take them one at a time or all at once, whatever you'd like.
All at once.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of meeting February 25th, special meeting March 2nd, special meeting March 5th, and special meeting March 22nd. Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion on any of them?
They're all good.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, Barbara, the problem is you sent me a PDF and it doesn't link, so I needed the word, but that's okay.
Here, wait, I can, we can forward it to you now if you'd like. You want me to do that?
Yeah, I need the word, I need the word doc, because I don't have the PDF that thing that allows you to play around.
All right, huh, I don't know what happened there, okay. I'm sorry. I just want to make sure.
Not your fault, I could, I could try and zoom too, but be easier. If I could find Zoom.
All right, I'm gonna send this to you right now. Okay. So while we're waiting for that, the tax collectors' report, Kim, I don't have anything from you. Did you have anything that? I mean, that was typed up, like you usually?
Nothing for this month.
No.
No.
Do you want to just comment on how the collections were going?
Um, actually, after tomorrow, I can let you know better, because I'm sure there's a lot in the mail that was put in on Thursday, because a lot of people do that, so. A lot came in on Thursday, Tuesday and Thursday, but um, there's still a lot out.
I will tell you, I checked um, the box here today, and there was nothing in it, so I took the uh, the notice off of it, anything in there would be late, because someone was trying to put something in it, so.
Good, yeah, I probably should have stopped and, and removed that, but I forgot.
No, but there wasn't anything in it, so I just wanted to let you know that.
Well, hopefully they put it in the mail then.
Yeah.
So after tomorrow, I'll have a better update.
Okay. Um, communications from the public, I don't know, Sarah? Let's see, there's another number, 748-0173? Did, did? No? Okay, they must have just jumped off.
I think that was Russ, but I am not, I'm just listening.
I'm here, I shut my phone down, I'm here.
Oh, that's what, that's what it was, you're right, Sarah, okay. All right, then we're gonna move on to the commission and board appointments. Um, I will make a motion to table the Council on Aging, the ZBA alternate conservation, actually, the two alternates positions. We, I did put something out in an email blast, and we did get people for all of them, but they don't have names for me just yet. They're, they're speaking to people that said that they were interested. So I just want to table just the alternates, because I also want to move um, Tony Benavegna, who is an alternate, and move him up to the conservation, the regular member there. So maybe I should do it a little bit slower. I would, I'm gonna make a motion to table the Council on Aging, ZBA alternate.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to, and I'm just making the motions, because I know what's going on here, but the conservation alternate, the vacancy expiring 6/30/21, Tony Benavegna, I would like to move him up into the conservation, just the regular, the vacancy expiring 6/30/24. He will be a regular member versus an alternate.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now there are two alternate positions available, and there were like three people who called, who were interested in getting on conservation, so at the next meeting, they will, they will have those names for me. So I make a motion to table conservation alternate, the, the two of those.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and the Senior Center Board of Directors, Kenny Allen would like to be appointed to that.
Great.
And there's, there's no terms on that, it just, people just serve at will, and I guess when they get hired or moved, they can, they can get off, so. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kenny Allen to the Senior Center Board of Directors.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, so now we have the special constables. And these always come up, um, the one, and I have the names in front of me, so I'll, I'll make these motions, RC 88 is Kurt Jovan. And I, if, if you want, I could just read them all at once, or do them individually. We should make a motion to appoint Kurt Jovan as RC 88.
So moved.
Because that is for the year, that is for the year, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then all of the rest are for, and I don't know that we need all of these, but a couple of years ago, all three of us put in, and it was mostly for the falls, and um, to, to have extra patrol at the falls, but, so that, these are the names. It's Barbara Henry, Russ Dorenzo, John Hopkins, Jim Conway, Art Atunes, John Cody, Meg Tinsley, and Paul Swanson. I don't even know that John Hopkins is interested in doing that. I meant to ask him, because he's really not going there, but he, he lives right there, so. If you want, we can appoint all of those, and it's only for the summer, May 1st to September 30th.
I'm making a, a motion to approve the four people that you mentioned?
No, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
I make a motion to approve all the eight people that you mentioned for special constable.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? And it's really that, you know, it just, whenever anybody's down there, it's not like we have certain hours, but we can ticket people, and I have, I have done that, so it, it kind of helps the police.
So Barbara, the special constable, I think I asked last year, we can actually go to Pearl But Park and write somebody up if they're there after hours?
Nah, these are, it's mostly, well, it's parking, it is, it's parking at the parks, so. You can, you can put a ticket, one of those, I mean, we still have tickets, the brown envelopes that Ed went ordered. It's gotta be over 25 years ago, there were thousands of them, but we're still using them and crossing off the 19 and everything, they work, and people put their money in them and send them, so we can still use them, and it is, it's all about parking. I have never gone to the other park. I've only gone to the, the falls, but yeah, you could, you could do that since you're over there.
So you, you write them up, and you, what do you do with the brown envelope, stick it in their windshield or something?
You stick the, right, you have to rip the tab off, because you have the information of the license plate, the make of the car, you have to fill that out on two pieces, you rip the tab off the top, that comes in here, so we, that we know who it is, we could follow up with it, and um, and then you just leave the other one on the car. And it can absolutely be there, because both of them have signs that says, you know, permit required, Roxbury residents only, but, and we, we will also sell out-of-town permits to just a small number of people, because otherwise, that they take over the parks.
Right.
But I have sold that in the past at the falls, but there's just so many parking spots there.
No, it's not that I'm, I'm looking for something to do, I just wanted to know what to do if the situation came up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, here we go. Okay, the Davenport Road, the bridge opening, we, we opened up all of the bids. Cardinal Engineering took them and um, went over all of them, and made sure that they were all, you know, giving us all the information that we needed. We do have the low bid, and, but we did not award this, and they know that, because in the bidding, in the request for a proposal, we said that we were waiting on the local bridge money. Now, I don't, I don't know what is going on with the state, I cannot get an answer, but this is money that was bonded, and then they hit their cap, so they're not bonding anything new any, right now, but we were in there with this local bridge money, but they have not awarded it to the different towns, so. Uh, it's a lot of money, you know, the low bid is over 700,000, and I say that we wait. I've written to the state several times, see if we can't get this money awarded, and then start the project. If we miss the construction season, the only positive is that, that the, the Band-Aid that we put over there was well done, and it'll last another year, and another winter. So, I mean, otherwise, it's our own, you know, money, and we should.
I, I agree, we should wait.
Yes.
We should get it, we should get it, okay.
How many bids did you get?
Uh, let me see. It was probably about nine, I have them on a pile on my chair over here. Yeah, from all over, even Massachusetts, and you know, they went over a million dollars, so. But I was surprised how many we did get. Okay, Full Circle Technologies, this is, I'm trying to grab this, I'm sorry. This is a company that that I want to award this money for. For the, oh my gosh, the software for the land use. Now, we approved the money at a town meeting to move, that the Board of Finance said would move over, but we never said it would be okay to hire this company, and this is who it was. This was the, it went out to bid, and this was who everybody here.
To hire Full Circle Technologies to do the land use computer upgrades.
Software upgrade.
Software upgrade.
Yeah, okay, this is the company that everybody said, yes, this would be great, okay. Do we have a second?
Yes, I'm good with that, I'll second.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we also approved the monies for the steep grant at a town meeting, but now the, the company that we want to go with is this ESC Environmental Systems, and I would like to start getting, get going on that one, as long as you say this is okay to go with them, again. Got several bids, these are with the state, so it's a state bid. Had Jimmy had, you know, several companies come in, we walked around with them, and this is who we are suggesting to go with.
I make a motion to approve ESC Environmental Systems for the steep grant.
Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll, I'll second that, and Barbara, just refresh my memory, what exactly are they gonna do for us?
Well, they're doing, they're doing everything from the, all the security upgrades.
I got it now, yep. Okay, they throw in environmental, that threw me off. Yeah.
They probably do air conditioning too.
Okay.
Probably. All right, the resolution for the Hodge, the Hodge is applying for money to redo their windows, and I sent you the resolution that, in order for them to apply, it is saying that Barbara Henry of this town, First Electman, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of the town a certain contract with the State of Connecticut, Department of Environmental and, and Community Development, and to affix the town seal, well, that's after, if, if you approve that I can sign this, we will fill it out, Peter will notarize it, and it can go in with their application.
I make a motion if Barbara could sign the resolution for Hodge.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, and one of the other things that goes along with that resolution is it's a declaration of covenants and preservation restrictions, and we have done this before with the the Old Town Hall, when we take money from this Department of Economic and Community Development on a historic building, we have to say that we are not going to change that use, and the senior center was 10 years, this is five years, so I'm also asking to be able to sign that, that we are saying we are not going to change the Hodge for five years.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
I thought we did that, okay.
No.
Aye.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we do these fair housing resolutions every year, because it's April, and it's Fair Housing Month, and really, whenever we apply for certain grants, we have to show that we, we have approved these, and that our town abides by them, so I sent those to you.
Yep.
Right?
Yes.
All right, so I'm just looking to get approval to send those, to send those in to the state to accept the fair housing resolutions, a fair housing policy statement, Title VI Equal Opportunity Statement, and the affirmative action policy statement, and I sent those all to you. And this is something we do every year.
So moved.
Yeah, I'm good, I'll second.
Second, any discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Um, okay, Mine Hill. I had a request for a, I just had this in front of me, I cannot believe it. I was just reading it right when we got on here. Mine Hill. This is crazy. Anyway, um, I'm looking, because I wanted to say, oh, here, that's right in front of me. It is a request to have a half a marathon, including the distillery, and this, this, I guess you'd say, it's called Steep Endurance, it's a group, it's done races all over the state, they've been through Steep Rock, Weantinog, et cetera, and they wanted to go through Mine Hill, but, and then come back and have something at the distillery just outside. The, the land trust denied the request for them to run through Mine Hill, and so they are coming to the town, and so what they want to do is, they want to start, I'm not sure exactly where, on 67, and run all through Century Hill, and come out by the, the, the distillery, and I said that I didn't, I didn't have any problem with that, they were gonna have to have police, or all, all, some, you know, some other things in place, they were gonna provide a bus.
Barbara, they pay for that?
They, they do, not us, they're looking to use our roads. They were working with some of the people from Maplebank Farm to set up a tent at the finish line, so. Like I said, it's an outdoor activity, it's, they've done races in Steep Rock, and they're looking to get.
Well, make a motion if you're good with it.
But wait a minute.
So anyway, it would be on a Sunday, August 29th.
Sunday, August 29th, and how many participants do we expect?
That, I don't, that I don't have, and they know that this is, because they're gonna be on 67, which a little crazy.
I'd like to know their exact route as well.
Yep, they do have that, and actually, I can send that to you. It was actually very well done, because it actually showed the, the line, I should have sent it to you, I'm sorry.
Because 67 is a tough road for a road race.
It is.
Well, what day is it on, a Sunday, did you say?
Yeah, Sunday.
Yeah, Sunday is pretty quiet.
Here, wait a minute. So his, he's, his name is Brian Vander, here, wait. Vander, I can't pronounce his name, here, I'll get it for you. And I'm sorry, I, I should have.
The distillery will benefit from this.
They, yes, it could, they, like I said, Maplebank Farm is gonna be there on the outside of, of the distillery.
I was just curious as to who is gonna benefit from the race.
Um.
I mean, they must, the rate, the people participating must pay a fee.
Yes, they do, they do pay a fee to run, um, let's see, I don't know, it's just like a fun thing that, that this group, Steep Endurance does, and maybe, you know, there's some of their followers. I'm bringing it up now, I know it's in August, but I just, I did want to bring it to your attention, and to give them the go-ahead to work on the final plans, I mean, I already talked about that, I said you're gonna have to have some police out there, which you're gonna have to hire, and so they know that.
Okay, well, if you're good with it, make a motion.
All right.
Unless Jim feels we should.
I, you know, it's just kinda wide open right now, but I, I can't see anything horribly wrong.
Yeah.
I mean, it's not gonna be like thousands of people, I hope.
No, no, I asked, I, I mean, he didn't give me a number, but I, I'm, I was saying, I didn't think it was gonna be thousands of people.
Boston, Maryland.
So I will make a motion that we allow Brian Vander Heiden of Steep Endurance work with me on planning this this half marathon at for August 29th in the town of Roxbury.
Second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. And you know what, I mean, you're giving me permission to plan with them, and if it doesn't work, then I'll bring it back next month and say we, we're not, we're not agreeing on some things.
Keep us, keep us in the loop.
Yep, I will. Okay, the next thing here is Mira and HRRA. I was actually on with Jennifer from HRRA and Gail, and the attorney for HRRA today, going over the contract, and uh, you know, there, there might be, there, there's some information in our ordinance that might get changed, although Gail doesn't think it's necessary to do that, however, we are gonna be signing a contract with HRRA, and they are just putting the final touches on it, and that is to be effective July 1.
Great.
Okay.
All right, so reopening Roxbury, the Senior Center and the Town Hall. I just wanted to, you know, start this conversation, I don't know of a lot of the town halls that are open, I have heard a couple of them are, and I didn't, you know, I'd like to, just know how you're feeling about it, I know that we're seeing that there are more COVID cases in the, in the entire state.
Reading, watching the news tonight with the huge spikes, would be crazy, and people are letting down their guard, and it would be a a thing from our, our town government that things are okay, and they're not. I, I think we should, we need to wait till September, see how things go, but shoot for September, there's no reason to open in the summer, when, when things are slow anyway. That's my feeling, but cases are going way up, and they're young people now. It said today, the 30, 40, 50-year-olds. Give, give the shots times, let, let more people get inoculated, and uh, no reason to rush opening, at least, that's my feeling. I'm shocked that cases are going way up, I'm shocked at that. 20% of the population's been inoculated, I get my second shot Thursday, but now they're talking about holding off on second shots so more people could get the first shot, so I'm hoping I don't get canceled.
And as far as Town Hall, the services are still available.
Right.
By appointment.
Everything. I mean, we're all still in here working, we have been.
Nobody's missing out, I think the Senior Center is a bigger miss, because people can't go to the programs, but that as well is more populated, and.
I wonder if they're all inoculated.
The seniors?
Yeah.
No, I know some seniors that said they weren't getting it, so not everybody.
Maybe, maybe we allow it open for people who, who have their two shots in two weeks.
And you have the, the card, the card is gonna become very important, that states that you have both your shots. That, you need to carry that card, just like a, a license. And if everybody had the card, then that opens up a, a bigger window of participation.
I know, well, Sarah, you're here, you have any thoughts on that, any of this?
Um.
Like the Senior Center specifically?
Well, I worry. But I do know that they're anxious to sort of have a place to go, or what to do, so. It's a tough call.
I mean, maybe we don't say we're gonna wait till September, but maybe we wait till June 1st and, and reevaluate it, and maybe we can find out how many have gotten there.
No, I, I like your idea, wait till June 1st and let's talk again.
Yeah, don't scare them into the fall, they'll.
Yeah.
Yeah.
People are on the edges, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, we'll bring this up again.
I'm just saying for Town Hall, because it's not really necessary, because it's operating and the services are there.
Yep.
And in the summer, it's very slow.
Can I just say, this is Kim, can I just say something about the last day to pay taxes?
Yep.
Um, we opened last Thursday for the last day, and it was, it was good, the other departments put their barriers up, so they could only go to the tax office, but we still have a lot of people that, I guess they're old-fashioned, and they, they want to have a receipt, and, you know, I'm just asking permission to open it for the last day to pay, like.
I unlocked the door, actually, because it was like they would be jumping up.
Right, because I'm getting up and down, and up and down, and up and down, so.
Yeah, if they wanna come in, why not?
I mean, just for that last day.
Right.
Oh, yeah, no, I think so, I mean, we did, we had the barriers in front of the doors, so that they couldn't walk around the Town Hall, and they went in and paid and left, it was very orderly, so.
It was good, it was good.
It was.
Yeah.
Okay, the annual town budget, Town and Budget Meeting is actually on May, Tuesday, May 18th, and it would be nice if we got actually some of this ESC Environmental Systems, part of that is that we could have a hybrid meeting, if you are interested in that, instead of on Zoom. We do approve our budget, at that meeting, we elect, we have one person, I mean, one position for the Board of Education, Greg Kava's term is up, he's expressed an interest in rerunning for that, but I mean, other people can be, you know, can say that they're interested in running, so we vote for those, we definitely vote for those things, we would have the HRRA contract on right now, and um, you know, other things come forward, but what do you, what do you think about a hy- Uh, right now and um, you know, other things come forward. But what do you, what do you think about a hybrid meeting?
I agree.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Because the other thing is, the next item is EMS week and EMS week is actually, um. I think it's that week. And I think it would be nice to do some kind of recognition to our ambulance. Group. And if they could, could come in, and I'm just talking out loud instead of being on Zoom.
Maybe have it outdoors.
We could, we could do that too.
Yeah, you could have it outdoors. You'd have more people.
Yeah.
Or open the windows. It'll be warm enough.
Yep. I mean, I don't know that we need to go to the park because I don't think a whole lot of people are gonna come out. But maybe we can just do something like that. Alright, so I will continue to look at that. And that's what I was gonna talk about EMS week. Okay, um, the Chapag Prom. Is uh, in June. And the, I don't know, you might have seen something in the paper, but the superintendent had contacted the three towns to see if we could help support. That. And um, actually, Spring Hill. Winery, I think, in Washington has offered up their place for this. The superintendent said there, there's no dates, there's no slow dancing. Um, I've contacted uh. Big Wave and have gotten, you know, where they could have tables that only have a couple of people at them. And they could have a dance floor and a DJ and some food that the students would be working on. So, um. Haven't really gotten a, a bill to see what it is, but uh, the other two selectmen said they'd be happy to contribute towards it. And uh, I, I, I would also like to say, you know, they, they're looking for.
Absolutely.
Having this prom. So it might be a couple grand for us to do it, but I'm sure we can find it.
Yeah, no, no problem.
Alright, okay. I don't think we need a motion for that. Alright, COVID nineteen updates. I mean, I put something in the, you know, the email blast. Um, I think it was like forty percent of our. Uh, population has been, has gotten the vaccine, at least one. Uh, we are seeing uh, an, an increase. And uh, we've seen an increase. In some of the elementary schools, not ours just yet, but uh. I, I don't know why it's going up either, but. It is. They, they, they are having spikes.
It is.
So we'll just continue to do what we're doing. Um, the other thing is, uh, you know, Newtown Health District, they give us. Just so many um, vaccines a week. And it varies and it used to be fifteen, it's dropped. And uh, it, it, that's another thing. It spikes, it goes up, it goes down. Geraldine, it's, everybody is, you know, calling Geraldine and she's filling those slots. But then she'll get a real. Long uh, waiting list. And uh, I know that she just put a bunch of people in for, I thi- I guess it's this week. So that, that just is all over the place. But um, we're trying to get the information out there to people to let them know that. You know, where these, where these vaccines are. But the vaccines aren't coming out fast enough.
No, they shouldn't go on a sixteen so soon. They should have let the older people get it before they. Opened it up to everybody. It's crazy.
Yeah, I, I know because they can't even fill. Like you said, you might even get canceled.
Right.
So, whatever. Anyway, I don't have anything, but um, you have two E M Ts here. Do you have anything to add to that COVID? Update? Nope.
People are getting sick, but they're not all in the hos- the hospitalizations are way down according to Danbury.
Yeah. Well, it's a shame because some of the things that you're seeing not, I'm not specifically talking about our town. But in the news, you know, it's the, the mental health issues and cases are seriously rising, which is.
Definitely uptick in that.
Yes, so. But we appreciate all that you do and answering all our calls here for not just COVID, but everything else. Um, we're lucky to have you. Okay, the Board of Finance Budget Workshop, there's one tomorrow night at seven o'clock. It is by Zoom. Um, I did not get the Fire Marshal's report. I did get the um, State Troopers Report. I thought I sent that to you and I, oh, I have. This is crazy. I, I'm putting things right in front of me and then it, they're not there. Nuts, nuts. I'm gonna go back into the mail here. Here, wait a minute. Nope, I am really sorry. It's gotta be here. I just got it.
Is it an email?
It is. Um, it's just that their Resident Troopers Report, he said during the month of March. Um, that two hundred and seventy-four calls for service. It includes investigations, motor vehicle stops, patrol checks, burglar alarms, medical assists. Um, there were twelve criminal, non-criminal investigations conducted. There were three accidents and uh, two hundred and fifty-six miscellaneous requests for service. There was three written warnings issued for a variety of motor vehicle offenses. Um, let's see. We do have uh, four post-certified officers at this time. We had a Anthony Signori. He was AC eighty-five. He worked for a short time and he was gonna fill in. He filled in in the summers. And uh, now he has just told us that he'll be leaving the department as of um, April twelfth to take care of his family. And uh, I can tell you that we're looking for a grant for these body worn cameras. And there is money out there, there was money out there. And so I'm working with Matt because this is gonna be an expense. It is put into our budget right now, but we don't, we're trying to get the revenue side of it. Um, and it's something that we're ha- we have to do per the state. Um, the current grant will refund thirty percent of the cost of the cameras. So, and right now, I think we have over three thousand dollars budgeted for them in this budget. But it's something we have to do. Um, the other thing is, is that. I, this, my office gets a, a lot of complaints from Woodbury and it has to do with uh, Upper Grassy Hill. And all of the cars and the garbage, et cetera. It's uh, become a, a place that um. People go up and they wanna sit and watch the sunset, but it's also, you know. It's a congre- a, a place for kids to congregate. That they've complained about um, kids racing up and down the roads and then they leave a lot of trash. And um, I'd say it's not town property, nor is it a town road. But uh, we are sending our police up there to patrol every once in a while. I'm actually gonna go and walk there tomorrow just to see the trash. They said it's really getting horrific. But when I was up there one time watching the sunset, I didn't see a whole lot of that. But uh. Woodbury is, is begging for help, but. We, we can't babysit, you know, Upper Grassy.
Some nights, there's over twenty-five cars there.
Hmm?
Some nights, there's over twenty-five cars.
Unless you call the police when that happens. It's simple to me.
Well, it's just, it is getting out of hand, that's all.
Yeah, well, the police, when they see people up there, that's, that's how you solve it.
Well, the, well, the police do patrol up there. I said, you know, Woodbury has more police than we do and they. They need to have somebody just camp out, I guess, up there if it is going to be a problem, but.
Well, our guys will watch it, right?
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
So anyway, I don't really have uh, anything else unless you wanted to.
I'd like on the next meeting to start talking about culverts and roads and bridges. Cause we dropped the cardinal stuff and we need to pick it up again. I know with budgets and uh, COVID and everything, we've been, all of us have been. Having a lot going on, especially with the public carings for wetlands lately. Uh, but I, I'd like to see on the agenda the next meeting. Uh, pick up where we're going with our roads, you know. I have questions on a minor bridge. What are we doing there? That's a simple fix. We're gonna get a company to come seal. Uh, if you don't seal, they get worse, it costs more money. Um, you asked me about the mirror at Upper County Road. There is a pole right there. I, is Butch telling you there's no place to put the mirror?
No, he hasn't said a thing. I'm going up there and looking at it and.
Okay, there's a pole right there.
I know, but you're trying to get the traffic coming up the hill and.
Right.
I don't think it's gonna work there. I think you're gonna.
Go look at it.
We have to go put another pole in.
No, I wouldn't do that, but go look at it. I think it'll work.
I did look at it.
My whole life in Derby.
I'm throwing up. We'll put it up there, but I don't know that it's gonna be of, of a lot of value.
Scary.
Yeah, it is.
It's scary. It's a scary intersection. We should do something then. Maybe cut the bank back a little. I don't know.
Yep. Well, we talked about that.
Yep.
Something we could do. That's pretty easy. Uh, we could put the mirror up. And uh, I mean, I even. Had our uh, resident trooper, I said, it's a state road, et cetera. And he, he even looked in, into it. And said, they're not gonna give you permission to do it. So we're just gonna have to do it.
Right. The heck with them.
Well, anyway.
Alright, I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good night.
Yeah. Have a good night.
Night, guys.
Yep. Thanks, Julie.
Good job.